Our pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start off with reviewing the board meeting guidelines and we're suggesting tonight that each one of us just choose one that we want to focus on to talk about at the end of the meeting so that we don't spend too much time talking about it. So is that?
About these?
Yeah, so just choose one that you're going to focus on later.
Okay. Do it right now? Oh, I think we need to do it at the end. How do we know until the end of the meeting?
It's a lot of children, but you're going to focus on them while we're having them.
Oh.
Fine over there.
I'm fine.
All right. Some more time.
Yeah, okay. Would you want to delete one for the different ones or something?
Sincerely.
Oh, okay.
All right, so everyone has one?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So general functions, we need a roll call vote for the consent agenda. The administration recommends approval of all the rest of the agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Mike. Just checking to see what we're voting on. Okay, oh yeah, all those things. Okay.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't, I wasn't sure.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, sorry.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mrs. Brazuela?
Oh, I'm first anyway. Aye.
Ms. Lia Ina Anawai?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Item G, administrative appointment, 2015, 2016. The administration recommends approval of the following administrative appointment for the 2015-2016 school year. Catherine R. Ma-Kay, or Mackay?
Mackay.
Mackay, sorry. Catherine R. Mackay, elementary principal, MH Tobias School, effective July 29, 2015 to 2016, workdays with a salary of $110,498.
I think that was 216 workdays rather than 2016 workdays, but...
Oh, yes.
Did you say 2000?
Yes.
I think you read it as a date.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve of the administrative appointment for 2015-2016 school year for Catherine Ma-Kay?
Mackay.
Mackay, oh, I heard you say that. Mackay, Mackay, Mackay. As our elementary principal at Martyr Tobias School, effective July 29 today, and for 216 workdays at a salary of $110,498.
I will second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Congratulations, Kathy.
So Ms. Mackay, let me be the first to say, welcome as principal of Tobias School. I'm sure that the board would love to hear any words that you may have for them, so if you'd like, please come forward. Nice words, of course, yes.
Always, always. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for approving me to be principal, and I'm really honored to be back at Tobias, so thank you so much. It is a thrill to be back, and I look forward to working with parents and teachers and the whole staff and all the students. I can't wait, actually, so August 19.
Right.
I also wanted to say, a shout out to JFK's staff as well because they were awesome in welcoming me as a dean, so I just wanted to say goodbye to them and hello to Tobias. Thank you.
All right. Item H, resolution number 15-07-29A, directing San Mateo County Chief Elections Officer to conduct any election between 2015 and 2017 for Jefferson Elementary School District wholly by mail pursuant to pilot program authorized by Assembly Bill 2028 if all other affected jurisdictions also request participation in pilot program at that election.
So we have Mr. Mark Church and other members of his staff present here today just to be able to answer any questions that you may still have. He does have a real brief presentation he would like to present.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the board. I just want to provide you with a brief update. Joining me this evening is Jim Erezory, the Assistant Assessor County Clerk Recorder, and Melinda Dubroff, Election Specialist from the Registration and Elections Division. Just a brief update, we now have 39 jurisdictions which have authorized participation in the all-male ballot election this November. We hope to have the Jefferson Elementary School District join that list this evening. Two of the 39 jurisdictions participating are the Broadmoor Police Protection District and the Colma Fire Protection District, both of course are within the Jefferson District boundaries. The entire San Mateo County Legislative Delegation is in support. This bill was authored by Assemblyman Mullen, and in addition Superintendent of Schools Anne Campbell and the entire San Mateo County Board of Supervisors are in support. Based on our own experience, as I mentioned previously, a countywide all-male ballot election will most likely result in increased voter participation by as much as 10% and reduce costs, saving taxpayers countywide anywhere between $776,000 to roughly $1.2 This map shows the surrounding jurisdictions that have authorized participation in the ballot program, as well as, of course, including here are the Broadmoor Police Protection District and the Colma Fire Protection District, as well as these red dots which reflect the universal polling places in the surrounding area. And just to refresh your memory, the universal polling places allow voters anywhere in the county to vote at any universal polling place. Their specific ballot type will be there at that polling place. And this next map shows, again, the universal polling places in this area of the Jefferson Elementary School District. The circles represent a radius of one and a half miles. In other words, for the most part of the district, the vast majority of the district, there will be a universal polling place within one and a half miles. The number of polling places required by AB 2028 that would be within the district are two. As you can see on this map, we have designated four, and I know we have discussed additional polling places as well, and we're open to discussing those this evening. Just want to remind everyone, this is a pilot program. It's limited in time to three years. It's limited to three elections. Two of those elections that we're targeting are the November 2015 and the November 2017 local consolidated elections. There will be also one local special election, which has not yet been determined. And just a brief reminder, in the Jefferson Elementary School District, we had a turnout of, in the 2013 November election, of over 86% of the ballots were cast by mail and only 14% at the polls. And that was the second highest in the county, next to Colma, which was 90%. So obviously, the people in this district understand and are familiar with voting by mail. And that concludes my report, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Mr. Church.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Church. I did want to just identify that I did receive correspondence on this issue, and I did place them in your mail folders. One from Mr. Assemblymember Jerry Hill and another piece from Councilmember Judith Christensen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you have any questions for Mr. Church?
When you mentioned two elections, November 15th and November 17th?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Those are the local consolidated municipal school district and special district elections. The legislation excludes the statewide gubernatorial election.
No, I realize that, but is this the same year?
2015.
2015 and 2017.
Oh, I get it. I was going to say, why are we voting on the third week of the month?
November 2015, November 2017.
Okay, I don't think I heard that completely, but thank you. I was trying to figure out what that was. There was something on one of the things you had here. Oh, go back to the picture where you showed the precincts that you're going to have. I guess that was that one.
Any one of them.
So you're doing this based on Jefferson Elementary School District? But yet, I thought the legislation said so many, so many voting places within the city.
The legislation requires at least one polling place in each city.
Okay, and I think I remember telling you that Broadmoor is not a city.
Right.
There's a lot of voters there.
I know that.
And when you talk about Colma, there's probably about only 100. The rest don't vote because they're underground. Anyway, so when we talk about percentages, we're talking about, you know, a difference of what we're talking about. When you say 80% of like 100 voters as opposed to, you know, 5,000 voters. But in this, I don't see where the precinct is, and I thought the last time you came, you said, "Sure, we can look into that." So how much are we looking into it?
Well, you asked about the law. The law requires at least one...
No, I'm asking about...
I understand.
What we talked about.
Yeah, but just as background, law requires at least one polling place in each city. We have designated four in this area. The law did not address the issue of unincorporated areas such as Broadmoor. But as I said, I am willing to address those concerns and those issues that this, that this board has to ensure that those people are, have a polling place.
Now, we already have one. We have one.
Broadmoor is very close to Daly City Hall.
Yeah.
But I remember you said before that people will not go to Daly City Hall from Broadmoor.
Well, I'm not saying they won't. I think they're much more comfortable voting in a precinct that's within our area, especially since our ballot looks different than the Daly City ballot. We will be having, the Police Commission is going to have their election, and we want to be sure that all the people in Broadmoor and the other unincorporated areas are going to be able to go to a poll that has the ballots that pertain to them. We've had problems in the past where they've gotten, they've gone there and they weren't able to vote.
So we...
They didn't have the right, you know...
Yeah, the Commission did not ask for a polling place, but I know you wanted one, and we are, we are interested in low...
I'm sure they wanted...
I'm sorry?
Oh.
We are interested in locating, identifying a polling place there.
It's...
And, if I could just finish, in past elections, it has been at the Broadmoor Community Center?
Yes, and they have two precincts in there.
Yeah, and we can do another one at the Broadmoor Community Center.
Okay, so, I mean, you can put two in there? The two precincts that belong to Broadmoor are in there?
Well, it's a universal polling place, so it's going to incorporate the entire county.
So, that raises...
But it's going to be, anybody can vote there.
Okay, so, all right.
This is for the convenience of the people in Broadmoor.
Yeah, that does raise a question that I think might help address some of the thing... So because they're all universal polling places, if a person comes into any of those polling places countywide and says, you know, "I'm from wherever in the county and I can't find my ballot," are they going to be prepared to get them a provisional ballot?
No, no provisional ballots. They are connected. Each universal polling place is connected to the voter registration database. We will be able to determine in real time if that person voted previously. If they have not, they will be given the ballot, they will be allowed to vote.
Okay.
From anywhere. If they live in Menlo Park and they work in Broadmoor, at the police station, they can come and vote there.
Well, does that mean that every universal polling place will have all of the ballots?
Yes.
Because it's all online, it's all electronic and they don't have to have a giant pile of paper.
It's all electronic, exactly. Your specific ballot type will be available anywhere in the county.
I mean, paper ballots, right?
It will be, it will be either. You can vote on the machine or you can...
Because some folks still want...
Vote by mail ballot.
Okay.
Yes, it will be a vote by mail ballot.
Okay, yeah, just want to make sure those little things, so I can understand it better. Okay, so that was, that was one of the issues. Let's see. That was my biggest concern.
All right. If there's no more questions for...
I have a question. Are we able to add Bay Shore, a polling place for Bay Shore, or possibly Old Daly City, which I know they reference in that area? Can that be added?
And that was, that was raised last time, I think you brought that up, and I indicated that we would do that. It's rather close to Brisbane, but we can, we can, which would have their specific ballot type there. But we, in the past, we've had a polling location at Lawson Hall, 125 Acacia. We can do that again.
Okay. That might be more, more important than the Colma versus Daly City thing, I think, from what I gather about Brisbane and Bay Shore, and whether people are comfortable going into the neighboring jurisdictions.
Yeah, so the law does require a Colma polling place and a Daly City polling place, and then any additional ones that seem necessary.
And then I was concerned, when we talked about the different locations that we got, we're really far away from these precincts that you're selecting, would be Skyline. They're all the way down practically by the dumps, you know? I mean, there's a lot of Skyline area, and there are big hills and stuff like that. So that's kind of an isolated, you know, faraway spot as well. I just want to be sure that everybody who chooses to go to the polls rather than mail in the ballot they get, that, or if they have questions or if they lost their ballot, that they're going to be able to go to one that's close enough to them, that they can get there without a hardship. There are some folks that have children and they don't drive.
Yeah.
So...
Sure. Well, as you can see by this, these particular polling places, practically the entire district will be within one and a half miles of a polling place. Now, we've just added two more, and, and so that may, I haven't put those on the map yet, so, but with six polling places in and about that area, that's quite a few.
Yes.
And we don't want to defeat the purpose of the pilot program, which is to determine the effects of all the ballot elections.
But you want it to work.
But just remember, this is, this, we will resume the traditional election once this is completed. This is really a study on the effects...
I want to note that people have 28 days to turn in a ballot, to go to a, as I read the thing, to go to a polling place, to get a replacement if they've lost it. I mean, I understand the concern about making it easy when people come up to the day of the election saying, but I also want to say, you know, we as voters have a certain responsibility to take responsibility, and when you have 28 days to get to one of these places, I don't see that as a huge imposition to have to, you know, maybe get by City Hall or the Westlake Community Center, you know? These places aren't totally out of the way, so I'm also, I, you know...
Mr. Church, is it, just to clarify, so these polling places that we've identified here with the red, they're open only on Election Day or they're open for the whole...
Yeah, thank you. To clarify, these are open on Election Day. These are open on Election Day.
City Hall is open on...
These red dots here?
Yeah, but City Hall will...
City Hall will be available 28 days.
Yeah, City Hall will be available 28 days in advance. The others are only on Election Day, but if you...
And mailboxes are everywhere.
If you need to have a replacement ballot, if you didn't receive your ballot, if you go to, during that 28-day period, each city will have a voting center, typically at City Hall, where you can get a replacement ballot. There's one in our office at the County Administration Building, 555 County Center, and there will also be one in San Mateo on Tower Road, but up here, Daly City Hall is convenient.
And then for some of the, of our district residents who are down there around the Roosevelt School?
Yeah.
They conduct most of their business and life in Pacifica, and there will be a polling place in Pacifica.
Exactly, I was also thinking, that's not on the map.
They go shopping in Pacifica, they take care of stuff.
Yeah.
In the past, the polling place was, if for Broadmoor, was at the community center?
Well, they had two, two at the community center because the space was large enough, but they also had another one in one of the schools.
All right, but I'm just saying that you'll have it back there, so now all of the residents will be within a mile and a half, and the majority within a mile, correct?
That's correct.
Of their polling place.
Okay, and that includes...
Skyline area.
Skyline?
Yes.
Skyline is on this map somewhere.
It's way down there by the dumps.
It's within the circle, it's covered.
It's a little bit deceptive because you kind of can't get there from here, but I think that the polling places in Pacifica, there's bound to be something down in the Manor District, and that is actually well within a mile of that and is accessible from that end of Skyline.
Yeah, I saw it in the other slide.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions before I go to public?
I didn't have a question, but I did have a comment. I think it's wonderful to hear that there is a savings of almost 800, a minimum of eight, almost $800,000 to $1.2 million of savings with this initiative. And I know that this might not be the role of your, your office and your staff, but I know the main concern, which I think is a shared concern, is just ensuring that everyone has an opportunity to vote. I think that's, that was resonated throughout the last time we discussed this resolution. So with that said, I would love to see how some of those savings, what it would look like to allocate some of that to voter education or some, just some sort of initiative, especially to the communities who have been very disconnected from voting. I mean, I think that's what we're trying to do, is engage voters and re-engage voters. And I would like to see how that could happen and how we can partner as a board to ensure that they have, because that's what we're talking about, making sure that everyone has a voice, and that's through the voting process. So that, I just thought that was great to hear how much of a savings that we will see.
Thank you. That's countywide. These savings are estimates, and we're estimating between 1/3rd and 50%. How that money will be allocated will depend on you. Each governing body will spend less money. Jefferson will spend, will save somewhere between $18,000 and $27,000 based on the figures in the 2013 consolidated election. So that's money that can be better spent on other things that you'll determine.
So, is this for sure that we're going to have the precincts that you're talking about? Is this a sure thing that we're talking about?
What I have represented tonight will occur, yes, if you...
But I still don't see the Broadmoor one. You're including that, right?
Yes, I'm including the one in Broadmoor.
Thank you.
And the one in Bay Shore.
It's really important.
Thank you.
And I will say that there are times when, and that's why we had such a huge discussion before, they had, they changed some of the, the, well, the boundaries of voting, and they ended up putting people in other precincts, and consequently, the ones that lived on El Camino, who could not get to the Broadmoor ones, did not vote. We're talking about an entire slab of voters that did not show up to those polls because it was too, there was not a way to get there.
You know, that's what's nice about the universal polling places, is they don't have to get over to Broadmoor.
No, no, let me, let me just talk, we don't need, let me finish what I'm saying. So what I'm just saying is, because there's less, there's going to be that, that same reason of some people not being able to get to a universal one if it's not within their area. If they don't drive, they're not going to get there. So I just, I know this is a pilot, and I, and I hope that we can work it out, but we'd like to have insurance, some kind of assurance that we're going to have these places available to them. I don't know how you're going to, how you're going to be able to really have all of the ballots, especially in all the languages that we have. I know when we have it down at Broadmoor, we only have that small amount of people, not small, but all the people that come there, I mean, there's, we have all the ballots, there's no more room to any more ballots. But you're saying you're going to have the ballots for Colma, the ballots for the Police Department, the ballots for this, all the different elections at the same time, available at every precinct? Is that correct?
In a database, it's going to be...
Yes, that's correct.
What do you mean database? Explain that. Oh, on computers? What happens to the folks that literally do not use a computer to come down? They want paper.
They will have, we will give them a replacement ballot on the spot.
You'll be able to print it there?
Thank you.
I just need, when people talk to me about these things, I want to be able to answer it for them. Some of the objections was that we're making a decision for some of them, and do I know everything? No, I'm trying to find out.
Sure, well, I think it's important to remember that voters, in a way, will have more voting options. Everyone will get a ballot in the mail, whether they signed up to get a ballot or not. And studies have shown that if they have a ballot in hand, they're more likely to vote. So they'll have a ballot in hand, and within a mile and a half, they can go to any, any of these universal polling places, or they can go anywhere in the county and get their specific ballot type. So really, in a way, voters will have more voting options.
Right. And I would also have to say that, I mean, we're really focused on the precinct availability, but the mailbox is the prime voting place. I mean, it's a vote by mail.
Yeah, to that end, Mr. Church, you know, our district will cooperate with your office to get any information out to our families, both electronically and in paper form, in the period leading up to the election. And, you know, every couple of years, our, our teachers, you know, run voter information, voter registration, and it's about time that we do another one. So we'll probably be doing some of that this fall as well at our open houses, so there'll be opportunities for both.
That's great, we welcome that. We welcome your participation in the outreach. We want to make sure everyone is aware that this election will be conducted by mail. We do have an extensive outreach plan, and your participation in that will make it a big success, so thank you.
Thank you.
It would be really nice, I had talked to some of our elected officials about this issue. I was getting phone calls constantly, but anyway, it was great to talk to them. Is there any way that there could be some sort of a committee that can get together where you can get folks from the different areas to have some input and let you know maybe what their concerns are? Because right now, you're only talking to us, and...
Sure.
Does that make sense?
We do have a voter outreach committee, multilingual, multicultural committee that will reach out to every community, and, and we have, I think, an aggressive media plan to reach out to everyone, including both traditional media and social media. We're going to be... We're going to be attending community events and, and we are, we are going to welcome input from the citizens as well. So if you know of anyone that wants to participate and provide us input, we welcome them.
So you're available to go like to say at homeowner association and different groups?
And we will be available to go and speak to inform them about.
Because I think that some of the folks really need to know, you know, especially some of the seniors and stuff, they really need to know what it is because a lot of them aren't used to change.
I have, we have been, as you might imagine, we've been busy, busy attending city council meetings, school district meetings and special district meetings, many of which are televised. And I have a pretty full calendar of engagements with some of the service clubs. One in Pacifica, the Rotary Club and many others, so we will be out there.
Sorry, I have one more question. I know you mentioned this before, but if you could maybe entertain the question once again. I know it being a pilot program, it expires in three years. What would it look like when it is over and say that everyone feels great about it? Is this something that needs to be reintroduced as new legislation? Or is there going to be something that says, we'd like to extend it now and we can sign off on something? I don't know if that's something you've already discussed, but if so, I'm, I'm just wondering what that looks like because three years goes by so quickly.
And of course, that's a decision for the state legislature. When, when, as I mentioned before, we will do a report back to the Secretary of State and the state legislature on the effects of the all-male ballot election on different segments of the community. We've hired a consultant to assist us in the preparation of that report. So each election that is conducted by mail, there'll be a report for. And then at the end of the three-year period, whether or not all-male ballot elections are embraced for the entire state will be a decision that the state legislature will make. Other states have done it, Washington and Oregon and Colorado. But the, what it will look like, the form it will look like will be a discussion three years from now after these reports are submitted.
Thank you.
I have one more question, if I may. Okay, so you talk about when you had the list of all the entities, I noticed that some of them had asterisk that said they're not having an election?
Yes.
But they still voted on it?
We have, we have 66 jurisdictions in, in the county, more than most counties in the state, more than San Diego, for example. So 40 of them have scheduled elections in November. So the others will have scheduled elections in 20, in even years. So they, they have even year elections and those 40 have odd year elections.
So they, they are not going to be under this plan?
Unless they have a local special election on a specific measure. And, and they, they approach us and they say, we would like to be that one election that is all-male ballot. And then if we agree, then, then they will be the one.
Okay, so what happens if, and I know, I don't, I don't see Melinda here tonight. Anyway, huh? She had mentioned something that I wanted to also explore on. If our district decided to go for a parcel tax, not, naturally not this year, but say next year, would we then be having to do an all-male ballot? Would we come under that or would it be different?
Remember, it's only local consolidated elections that we're talking about. So it would have to be in 2015 or 2017 or it would have to be a standalone special election that we, we agreed to do.
Okay, so if more than one entity asks for it, only one entity is going to get it? You said just one?
There will only be, in addition to the consolidated elections in, in 15 and 17, there will be only one other local special election. Only one more.
So if we want to do it and another district wants to do it, then one of us doesn't get to do it? Is that it?
That's right.
But we can do it the other way?
If you pass this tonight, you, you will be doing it the other way.
Wait, I meant the other way, I meant the other way. Okay.
I think that's good on deliberation. So we have three speaker cards or more? All right, three minutes per speaker. The first one would be Sandra Gordon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have a question about if somebody makes a mistake on a written ballot, how much time do they have, you know, to make a, a change on a corrected ballot if they cannot make it at a poll physically to get there and they have to do it by mail? Has that been taken and into account, considered with written ballots? It does occur.
So, okay, so if, if you need a replacement ballot for any reason, you made a mistake or you didn't get a ballot in the mail, whatever reason, if you come to a universal polling place on Election Day, you can get a replacement ballot. Or if you go to a voting center, any one of our voting centers 28 days in advance, you can get a replacement ballot.
What about the physically impaired who can't drive or do that travel to get a ballot? What, what happens with them?
If they call me, I will personally deliver it to them.
Write that down.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm being facetious, although I have delivered ballots, an email or a phone call and we'll give them a ballot.
All right, thanks.
We have delivered ballots before. If they call.
I supervise the vote-by-mail unit and the envelope that we use has a box on, on the exterior where you can mark it if you've made a mistake and want a replacement ballot. So you can, you can just send it in and we'll send you a new ballot.
All right, thanks. The next speaker is Gary Waddell, Deputy Superintendent, San Mateo County Office of Education.
Good evening, Board President Ali, members of the board, Superintendent Madalis. I am Dr. Gary Waddell, Deputy Superintendent for Instructional Services at the San Mateo County Office of Education. I'm here tonight on behalf of San Mateo County Superintendent of Schools, Ann Campbell, who's unable to attend this evening's meeting because she's out of town on family business. Superintendent Campbell asked me to convey the following message to you. Dear members of the Jefferson Elementary Governing Board, this evening you will be voting on Resolution Number 15-07-29A regarding participation in the all-mailed ballot pilot program for the November election. I urge you to approve the resolution. I've participated in numerous conversations with Chief Elections Officer Mark Church about the pilot program and he has presented a compelling case on behalf of the all-mailed ballot pilot program. All-mailed ballot elections held in other parts of California and throughout the United States have demonstrated that voter registration and participation increase when every voter receives a ballot by mail. In addition, vote-by-mail elections are more efficient as they save, and so they save taxpayer dollars. I urge you to adopt the resolution presented to you this evening. Please approve the Jefferson Elementary District's participation in the all-mailed ballot program. In doing so, you will be joining every other special district, city, town and school district with an election this November.
All right, thanks. Pamela D. Giovanni.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, Honorable Assembly Member Kevin Mullen. I really appreciate the intent of this to increase our voter registration because we don't have enough participation, as you know. I would like to concur that we take the monies and follow what Manu Foe said and take our monies into voter education. That was one of the things I had written on my pad. It is very important that we engage our young people in our future and I haven't seen enough of that as his father had done while he was Assembly Member. It is a key thing and I know that's one of the things we can look to the future on. And I would like to make sure that the little things are addressed as such as Sandra Gordon said, when someone is having surgery and I know that she speaks from a personal spot without conveying too much interest of not having access and if you do make a mistake even the last day, some people really, it's hard to believe, do not have access to even a phone in our community. That's how our community is set up and our diverse community, as you know. And I would like to see that we may provide some transportation or have something in place for emergencies such as that to where make sure that everybody that wants to access or they feel a little shy because their native languages are not English and they are too shy to call and make, make a call to the place, you know, to have someone help them. So we need assistance in that as well. So you are our electeds and I trust that you'll do the right thing and you'll make sure that there, one injustice is not an injustice for all and that you will make sure that it's all-inclusive for all of us. So I trust you in your decision and I look forward to the future and including all of our young people as well. And thank our Honorable Assembly Member for looking into this. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Jamal Magano, AFT.
Good evening, board members and administrators. Thank you for the information on this issue. It's obviously a very important issue. On one hand, we as a community want to, we want to balance on one hand the savings in money, cost of effectiveness and efficiency in the voting process on one hand. On the other hand, we want to make sure that every voter has the opportunity to vote. And opportunity means access, ease, meeting the voter's general needs and being able to vote. So it's understood that this is a three-year pilot program. And it would seem to me that it would involve a transition period, a three-year transition period. And we see that there are so far planned four universal voting places. I'm wondering if it would help our voters in Daly City. I'm sorry, did I introduce myself?
Uh, sorry, Jamal.
Jamal Magano. And I'm speaking in Melinda Dart's absence on behalf of AFT, so sorry. So I see that there are four planned universal voting sites. It would seem to me that since this is a pilot program and there is a transition period and there is an education period and a curve for our voters to be able to transition for those, the 14% who prefer to actually come to a polling place, can there be in the first year, for example, eight or 10 universal polling places? This is a transition period. Second year, six or so, and third year, four. That way we give our voters a chance to ease into this process. We don't, we minimize the strain, the difficulty, the confusion that some voters might have. As a pilot program, I think there should be some mechanism to allow for an ease of transition for the voters. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Assembly Member Kevin Mullen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members, superintendent. Just here to thank you. I did some outreach to the board and I just want to thank you for your responsiveness. I know you've been getting lobbied from our state and federal folks, but your responsiveness, your thoughtfulness, your analytical approach to this is very much appreciated. I know this is not an easy step we're taking. I am the author of AB 2028, which created this, this pilot for 2015 and 2017. And I just wanted to share with you, the overarching goal here is enhanced participation. We are erring on the side of inclusion as opposed to exclusion, as you see in some other states. I'm excited about taxpayer savings, but really what drove our efforts and I know what is driving the efforts of the Elections Office is the awareness of the election, the engagement and the participation. So to answer the question about where we might go after this pilot, this is really about data gathering. We need to be able to demonstrate that voters are participating at previous or enhanced rates than they were prior to this pilot. The taxpayer savings are irrefutable. We are going to save money as a county. I know our, our Chief Elections Officer, Mark Church, thank you for your leadership on this issue. He will ensure that those savings are established. But this is really about having every vote count. I know that there's going to be a robust outreach plan. You have my commitment to engage this community in this issue. I want this pilot to work, but the pilot will only work if we have robust participation by all of the jurisdictions. So I will continue to work on that and continue to work with, with Mr. Church's office. And one additional note, just to sort of provide additional context, and I know this issue has been discussed to death, so I will, I will conclude here. The state is moving, I believe, is my opinion, is moving toward a model that's been established in Colorado, which is a hybrid model, where every voter gets a ballot, but you have a, a significant number of these universal voting centers that are driven with technology. So in real time, you can establish whether a voter has, has cast a ballot or not to ensure there isn't fraud in the system. The Secretary of State is advocating for this model. Legislators in both houses are advocating. But there really is, as, as one of the previous speakers said, a transition that needs to occur to have that go statewide. But we in San Mateo County are leading the way on this. We are going to be ahead of the curve from the other 58 counties. 57, Yolo County does have their pilot, but this is the first time a suburban or urban area will be doing this kind of a pilot. So I would appreciate your consideration and your support.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So here we are. Any more questions or deliberation?
Okay, so we hear, we're hearing a lot of the different numbers, but I want to make sure when we vote on this that we have some more precincts over there.
Yeah, I believe it's six at this point.
Right, right?
Bay Shore and Broadmoor is included.
Got to make sure.
Well, do we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve, pardon me, Resolution 15-07-29A, directing San Mateo County Chief Elections Officer to conduct any election between 2015 and 2017 for JESD wholly by mail pursuant to the pilot program, et cetera.
All right, Mrs., do you have a second?
I second it.
Roll call.
Mrs. Brizella?
Aye.
Ms. Leah Inga Anawain?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye, unanimous.
And so we're going to invite you over to Broadmoor so you can talk to everybody. Don't forget. Because, you know, if they don't know about it, they're not going to know what to do. Only we know what's going on, right? Only we know what's happening, the people have to know.
Everybody's watching.
Oh, high, high up it out there.
A lot of people are paying attention to this meeting tonight.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I think my husband said he might watch it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, I know as the Assembly Member had mentioned, a lot of us may have or may have not been lobbied on this issue. And, you know, it, it's very important. I think that's why a lot of people were involved in the process. I know the reason why I, I was torn and I think it's important to, for myself to note the difficulty in coming to this decision was we are each tasked as a board member to make the best decision. We're not always given the opportunity to make the decisions that we want at the time that these opportunities arise. And I think it's wonderful that we were able to come together despite any reservations we may have initially had to make the best decision, you know, that we had to make at this time. And I, I thought that was very commendable for our board as a whole. So I'm glad that we were able to do that tonight.
Because the first time it came to us, it was actually four people that said, no. We didn't want it for the, some of the concerns that we've been talking about.
Well, I think we just have more, we have questions, we needed more information.
Yeah, we needed more information.
Well, because it was, at first it was told that we, one, one place, one, one voting place and we had concerns, even members of the public brought it up as well. But. But the thing that was hardest for me is to think that, you know, this board stayed on that same way we felt, and even though we may feel that some people might not be able to work out this new system, to think that we would hold up the whole thing would be heartbreaking, probably. So, each of us needs to keep involved in this. If there's something that we see that needs to, you know, get, contact the county, let them know suggestions that might make it really work. Because just because we vote on it doesn't mean it's going to work. We all have to be engaged in it.
That's true.
So, that's, I just wanted to say that. So, I'm doing my part to invite them to Broadmoor.
Item number eight, A, Board Policies and Administrative Regulations. October 2014 Board Policy Revisions, AR 3350 dot two, Staff in Service and Business Expense Guidelines. AR 3350 dot three Travel and Conference Guidelines and Board Policy 4121 Personnel First Reading.
So, yes, this is the first reading. It's sort of a combination of several things. One is the update from the October 2014 packet. Those were subject changes made because the laws changed over the summer, so they revised them. The in-service and travel conference guidelines, those were written to make clear sense and also to update amounts to twenty-four, twenty-fifteen values. I found that I was making a lot of exceptions. People couldn't eat for, you know, ten dollars or something, whatever the amounts were in there. So, we updated it to something that seemed a little more reasonable, and I didn't have to make special exceptions. And then, BP 4121, that's as a result of a new law as well in terms of how substitute employees accrue sick leave.
Yeah, we didn't want to say anything, but yeah, it was hard to eat on two dollars.
I think we had more than two.
No, I'm just kidding.
But it was still tough sometimes, really. So, anyway, this is sent to you as a first reading. It will come back as a second reading, and it's accepted tonight.
I didn't see any, I thought it was pretty clear. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve as a first reading, Board Policies and Administrative Regulations as presented tonight.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number nine, Board Member Comments and Reports and Reflection on Board Meeting Guidelines. You kind of both started that already, to me.
Well, Mrs. Brizwella, it's entirely ready, so let's.
No, no, I'm not ready. You go.
No, no, go ahead.
No, you go, you go. You have to think, I got to think too. Like, oh my God. Okay, let me see what's going on. Okay, I'm going to, okay, I'll take the one. "We will listen attentively to all ideas. We will listen openly and without preparing responses." I think pretty much we did that tonight, especially on the fact that we had our, kind of our own feelings a few meetings ago that had we voted that night, it would have been, we wouldn't have accepted it. And I think we listened and we asked a lot of questions and got answers. And I think it looks like we're ready, even with our superintendent, ready to engage other people to get on board. So, I think that worked, it's worked well.
I think I kind of mentioned how I felt about this one, was when we have a difference of opinion, we will debate the facts of the situation and avoid personalities. We will address process, not personalities. And I think we continued to do that, and I thought we did that again tonight.
That was interesting, the one that I had thought to focus on, and I would totally agree. I think we also did a good job. The other one I always keep an eye on is staying focused on our goals and avoid getting sidetracked. And I think we did a good job of that tonight as well.
Sure. And the one I focused on was the governance team will work together to ensure that there are no hidden agendas and that all issues and concerns can be dealt with openly by all members. So, that definitely happened tonight in front of the public here. And I know that we came to a decision that we all can sleep on. I mean, you know, we can go to sleep tonight, so maybe. It was unanimous.
It was, it was. I'm just kidding.
All right, so anyhow, yes, we did a great job. And if there's no other?
I have a few, sorry.
I mean, I'm just going to say one other thing. I still believe that this is a pilot program, and I'm not sure it's going to be perfect in every way. Nothing really is most of the time. But if we can try our best to overcome some of that stuff and to get information out to folks, it'll be a big help. And if we can communicate with the county, I just have to say, they left already, but it kind of bothered me that my children were still on the ballot, on the list. And one moved over to, you know, I guess it was Arizona, and the other one moved to Chicago. And they keep moving around other places, and they're still on the, you know. I think this last year, I think two of them have taken off finally. But that's one thing I want to make sure that we work with, with the county, is that the list of registered voters is really updated. It used to be years ago, if you missed one or two or three elections voting, they took your name off and you had to re-register. They don't do that anymore. But I see people that are dead that are on the list. Time to remove, I'm sorry, it's true. Time to remove their names. So, with the all-mailed ballot, I want to be sure that someone else is not taking that ballot and voting and turning it in. So, they mentioned something about the fraud thing. So, if we all can just kind of be together on something like that and alert them to some things, it'll help a lot, but it takes all of us.
That's true. Any one else have reflection?
Yeah, not a reflection, I just had an announcement. Yeah, but I definitely agree. I think because we did all vote on this tonight, that we are still responsible to make sure that the process is effective and transparent. I always believe that teamwork makes the dream work. But I was, I just wanted to report on what I've been seeing at MP Brown with Rebuilding Together. If you pass by on Eastmore Avenue, there's just no way you cannot appreciate a lot of the great work that they put in there with the PTA. And the PTA president there, Sharon, I mean, she's amazing. She's a go-getter. She made sure this happened. And, you know, Diane Lacata, this was one of her last things before leaving MP Brown. She came on with both her parents and were able to see this project come to fruition. And my kids have left MP Brown, and so it's great to see how it looks now. So, I'm very, very thankful. I was having kids that are alumni there. It's just wonderful, and I would encourage anyone and everyone to stop by and look at it. That's a great example of community at its best. I also had an opportunity, thanks to Rick Young, to see some of the construction there at Ben Franklin. I thought it was great. I know that we voted tonight on the change order, but the view from that area is wonderful because my daughter, my oldest daughter also went to Ben Franklin. There's no windows in that school. So, this is going to be a really nice part of that school. And lastly, I did want to encourage everyone. Camp Unity has been in Daly City for three years, but this is our fifth year in existence. We have a luau this Saturday at Ben Franklin. And it's a full-fledged luau show, very authentic from every Pacific island of Polynesia. And then, we have a full-blown luau menu. So, three to seven, if you're home, not really busy this Saturday, please come by and join us. So, really want to thank the superintendent and administration, Rick Young and the team, for continuing to help Camp Unity be here because it's an all-volunteer organization. And to date, we've served a thousand kids here in Daly City and North County. So, it's just wonderful to see everyone partner to make things happen for our kids during the summer. So, thank you, and I hope everyone enjoys the few weeks you have left before August nineteenth.
And I just wanted to comment that while our elementary school starts on August nineteenth, those who are making the transition to high school, bear in mind that the high school district starts classes on the thirteenth.
Not a Friday, right?
It's Thursday, Thursday, the thirteenth. I don't know why.
I'll make one announcement as well. This Friday, eight AM to two forty-five PM, there's the Better Together California Teachers Summit at San Francisco State. And I was recently added as one of the speakers for that event. So, hopefully, I'll see a lot of you there. Any more announcements? I don't think so.
Well, I just want to let the teachers, those of you that came, thank you so much for coming. And enjoy the rest of your days off.
Yes.
And the parents.
Yes, we do appreciate it. It's nice to look out there and actually see people. It reminds us why we're here. We're not hocking in a vacuum.
Because usually, they come for that pledge allegiance, and they all leave.
All right, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight oh-three.
Yay, early, yay, yay.
I have a few left, if you want to.